Do we have anything to report out of closed session?
No, the City Council met pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9 Subsection D-2 in closed session and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. So my computer is updating. I have no agenda.
All right, roll call please. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Lamson.
Here.
All right, silent prayer and flag salute. You stand.
Whoa.
One on your shoulder.
Who's wearing one? Who borrowed the flag?
Got a tie.
The tie. Center mark.
All right, let's have our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's a little snappy. That was awkward.
Donna is gonna, the city clerk is going after whoever took that flag. Or just, okay, I've got children now. All right, can you please replay the statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, June 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, June 8th at 9:00 a.m. The City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, are there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions?
Like to pull J-2 and 4.
G-2 or J-2?
J-2 and J-4.
Anything else? All right, we have a presentation, the Galt Area Historical Society 2018-2019 Community Benefit Funding Grant Report to the City Council. I believe we have Janice Barsetti-Grey.
I'm Janice Barsetti-Grey, President of the Galt Area Historical Society. In 2018, the Galt Area Historical Society was awarded $6,000 of the Galt community benefit grant. We applied for this grant to do repairs to the Ray House Museum, which was built in 1868. The Galt Area Historical Society received this property in 1991 and we renovated the house at that time. Now, almost 30 years later, it needs some major work, but obviously we only have so much fun. So, also due to the length of the rainy season and how busy contractors are and catching up, the contractor whose bid we selected had to finish other projects, but he informed me just a couple of days ago that he will be starting on the Ray House this coming Monday, June 10th, and will be done before June 30th. So, so those repairs will happen and you'll hear back from him before, or you'll get the receipts before the end of the month. Do you want to know some of the work that he was doing?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so his actual bid was $8,220, so we actually have $2,200 out of pocket to repair. We've got, we've got, and again, there's a lot of repairs that need to happen on the ray, so we just had to define the ones that we could, we could fund now and, and do others later. So, we have, we have new gutters that have to be put on one part of the roof. We also have, some of the moldings have rotted out and he has to repair some of those and actually what he has to do is actually make them, some of the outside moldings. There's some dry rot on both decks. He has to actually take the wood out, repair the wood. Some of it has to be, some of the rot that's not there, he has to cover it up, paint it, and et cetera. We have an outside light source that is a security light that has not been working and the parking lot is very dark, so he has to repair and replace that light. We have a broken window. Somebody has shot a BB gun through it, BB hole, so that has to be replaced. We also have an outside restroom, a public restroom, that's used at the Ray House that because some water damage got in, we had some mold underneath the linoleum that all has to be replaced. He has to, has to paint something on the cement and so that has to be done. Then, of course, he has to haul off the debris. And again, we do have a lot of rot on both ends of both decks, so these all accumulate up to $8,220 is the bid. So, I did have him at that time also look at a lot of other things, so I'm kind of prepared for future things. I'm actually working with the county on some of the things for repairs there, so we also have some of those things coming up with them, but, so that's what we have. So, do I have any questions on what we're doing? No?
A lot to do.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry it took us so long, but you know, he was behind and, and I know they're all kind of backed up. I was fortunate to get him going so soon, so yeah. So, okay, well, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, next, we have Lahim of Galt, 2018-2019 Community Benefit Funding Grant Report to the City Council.
Evening, Mayor Lamson, Vice Mayor Farmer, council members, staff and audience. My name is Gail Weber and I've been the Board President of Lahim since January of 2018. During my tenure with Lahim, I have come to really appreciate the work they do in our community, quiet little projects that make such an impact. In April 2018, Lahim brought a pillowcase project to the City Council requesting funds for the community grant. We were awarded $3,500. Thank you very much. Our project was brought to us by TJ Godati from the Galt Police Community Resource Officer. We had asked TJ to help us find a need and we talked about some of the things we made and it was decided to ask for funds to make 600-plus pillowcases for the CSD and Galt PD Community Toy Drive. We would hand-make pillowcases using novelty fabrics, themed fabrics, boy and girl themed and generic. The women of Lahim actually started sewing pillowcases with donated fabric and materials we had before we received the grant. They were determined to do this project with or without grant money. We would figure it out as we went. We received help from the following people: Sheila Step, Carolyn M., Mary V., Gail, Odell, Julia, Peggy, Sharon, Linda, Kitty, Sandy, Judy, Colleen, Yasara, Alice, Susan, Linda, Eddie, Betty, Marie, Venus, Colleen Walton and the seniors at New Hope Village, and Mark Cruz in Troop 1119. We made up pillowcases that several volunteers were stopped by and exchanged their completed pillowcases for kits to make more. It truly became a community project. The pillowcases were made using the burrito method. You would actually sew all the fabric together using one seam, into a tube, turn it inside out. That left all the seams on the inside and only one seam to finish. We obviously gave instructions in the pillowcase kits. I myself never quite mastered it, but I was not hired for my sewing skills. I could not master it at all. Our deadline was December, but we fulfilled the order around October. For this project, we purchased 635 yards of fabric, 50-plus spools of thread, several needles for sewing machines, two cutting mats, as we wore out two of them, several rotary cutting wheels, again, we wore out several of them, and a couple a pair of new scissors. These combined with materials we already had on hand allowed us to accomplish this project. The women are already sewing more pillowcases. They go to needy families at Fair Sight School and homeless teens at both high schools. We were informed that there are 238 homeless teens identified between the two high schools, and we are putting together 100 hygiene kits, tote bags, and of course, pillowcases. One of the women makes pillowcases to take to the Sacramento Children's Receiving Home. Lahim's pillowcases have traveled all over Sacramento County. The women of Lahim, thank you for granting us the monies to continue our reach to those in need in our community. Thank you. Any questions? We actually donated, I think, 690 pillowcases.
Wow.
To the fire department and police department.
A lot of fabric. So, when you say homeless teens, you don't mean people, teens are out on the street, you mean?
Both. There are teens that are couch hopping, there are teens that are camping in people's backyard, there are teens under the bridge, but the school told us there was 238 identified between the two high schools. So, the high schools have asked us to provide them with 50 hygiene kits and tote bags. We were giving them blankets, socks, a bunch of stuff that then the school can then identify and hand them out to the kids so that their peers aren't aware that they're homeless. So, and we'll make more as they need them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have another presentation, use of consultants. Michael Selling, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor Lamson. Council members?
Let's see here. So...
Okay, apologize for the delay. Yeah, thank you for this opportunity to make this presentation to you tonight. This is in response, I think there were a few questions from council members, you know, not terribly long ago, and our interim city manager, Mr. Haglund, thought it might be a good idea to make a presentation on, on the use of consultants by the city. So, with that, I want to note that Mr. Ryas and Ms. Tyson were helpful in putting this together. It primarily, you know, focuses on our three departments, but it's really generally, you know, applicable to any of the city departments, so. Okay, so in this presentation, I'll cover three key aspects from the city's perspective when it comes to utilizing consultants. The general reasons why and when we use consultants, what the benefits are, and then also what the drawbacks may be. As we all know, there's trade-offs to everything. So, why and when do we use consultants? These are some of the general reasons the local agencies employ consultants. Plain and simple, in many cases, consultants are utilized due to a lack of expertise within an agency. And that's particularly, you know, applicable, I think, for a smaller agency like Galt where you don't have a lot of staff to have a lot of expertise in that staff. Next, as many consultants typically have specific areas of expertise and work with multiple clients for issues in those areas, that experience can be invaluable to the agency to help avoid potential pitfalls and the associated potential lost time and additional costs. Third, while an agency may have an idea on how to address an issue or approach a project, a consultant can provide a second opinion that may or may not confirm the agency's viewpoint on it. They may be able to provide additional innovative options as well and identify challenges the agency may have missed. Relative to staffing, while agency staff may possess the skills to complete a project or address an issue, it may be overly demanding and not the most efficient use of staff resources. So, utilizing a consultant can give an agency the option to best utilize its staff. And then lastly, some financial requirements legally mandate the use of consultants for reviews and audits, effectively an independent third-party analysis. Also, some grant and funding opportunities have pre-screened or qualified pools of consultants that must be used. So, turning to the benefits, consultants can provide additional capability to an agency on an as-needed or temporary basis, what we refer to as staff augmentation. This is typically done to keep the workflow moving until new staff are hired and are trained, or to complete one-off projects or efforts. Utilizing them often minimizes the disruption, disruption to the normal workflow versus reprioritizing efforts of agency staff. Making use of consultants avoids ongoing staff costs, you know, things like hiring, training, office space and equipment, salaries, benefits, retirement, et cetera. And then, as consultants are used to getting up, are used to getting up to speed quickly, it can save time, which equals money as well. And then lastly, consultants provide external objectivity as well as potential similar prior experience, which can help a local agency weigh all alternatives and help facilitate decision-making. With regard to the disadvantages, the process to select and enter a contract can take from a couple to several months, and this also requires some staff time that can be spent doing other efforts. A consultant may not be familiar with the pertinent history or other key aspects relative to a project or work effort, or unfamiliar with the processes and workflow of a given agency. Third, while not always the case, utilizing a consultant can add some cost, as a consultant still must be managed by staff. Next, while rare, a consultant's availability may be limited due to other contract commitments. And then lastly, another drawback, at times, some consultants may try to use a previously successful approach but fail to meet the specific needs of the agency. This can lead to additional time and cost to rectify. So, we wanted to now turn to providing some examples, and obviously for Public Works, some specific, specific examples include, we use them typically on larger or specialized transportation projects. We use them a lot for wet utilities, as I think you've seen on the agenda tonight, for the buildings that we maintain, whether it's a new design or a major remodel. And then lastly, for fee and cost of service studies, and that's relative primarily to our wet utilities.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and talk about community development. Hi, Chris Ryas, Community Development Director. We do use consultants frequently. Our two largest uses of consultants include supplemental building and supplemental planning services. We use four-leaf building services for building permit plan review, inspection services, and building official administration. The cost of the plan review and inspection services are typically recouped through fees charged for the service. Sometimes, we do use contract inspectors in lieu of a city employee. This is usually to fill gaps in staffing. For example, we are currently using a part-time four-leaf building official in place of our full-time employee who left for another job, I think, back in December of last year. The cost of the part-time contractor is much less than a full-time city employee. We use Rainy Planning and Management for supplemental planning services. The supplemental planning services include development project management and review, and preparing all development-related California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, documents. We use the services for development project management to help balance the workload with staff, and it provides the city a higher-level planning service for more advanced planning projects. The consultant expertise is definitely needed for SEQA preparation. SEQA is a highly specialized field and is time-consuming. The use of the consultant for SEQA preparation and planning services is definitely efficient for the city. Development in the city is not always consistent, so using the consultant for development services allows us to ebb and flow with the development cycle rather than taking on a long-term obligation for additional staff. In addition, and the best part really, is the direct cost for SEQA preparation and supplemental planning services is paid directly by the developer. No city funds are used for planning-related consultant services. It should be noted that both four-leaf and Rainy are under contract with the city, and they obtain those contracts through a competitive bidding process. Sometimes, we do use consultants for specialized projects. We're currently using Rainy Planning and Management for the preparation of the Climate Action Plan, and we're using GHD, formerly OmniMeans, for the Corleone Boulevard Master Plan. Those special studies are often funded by grants, and if they're not, we would come to the council for approval for paying for those services, and of course, there would need to be available budget to actually accomplish the task. So, we do use consultants in other smaller projects. For example, we have an outside consultant do development project landscape review, but again, development pays for it. There's no direct cost for the city. And in that case in particular, we're way too small to hire a full-time landscape architect to review plans, so we, we do need to use that service. So, I think that gives you kind of a snapshot of how we use consultants in community development, and I think Ms. Tyson is next with, or I don't know if you're speaking or?
Thank you, Claire Tyson, Finance Director. So, some examples in finance are audits, and there's a variety of different audits. The, the large audit for the CAFER is, is required. That's basically, LSL is a consultant for us. We have state reporting requirements. We have debt eligibility and compliance. To obtain grant funding, all of those require certain kinds of audits. Financial advisors, we're required to have a municipal advisor for registered bonds, and it's an SEC requirement, so we have a consultant that provides that financial advisor service. Software, obviously, we have to have several different kinds of software consultants. We will use them primarily for implementation solutions, for other financial systems or any other system we have, implementation of a software or upgrade. We're bringing in consultants for all of that. They're experts in that field and know the software better than we do, and frequently, those consultants are also doing training for the people using the software. Let's see, special tax consultants. We currently utilize at least one special tax consultant for sales tax. It can, those kinds of consultants can be used for property tax or other kinds of taxes. They have knowledge statewide, which we wouldn't have in-house. They also do certain kinds of solution services, like basically audits of businesses. Are they, are they recording their taxes correctly? So, they provide those services for us. And then augmentation of staff, we're, as, as a lot of the departments, we're pretty lean on staff, and so we bring in interns. We can bring in accountants, anything to fill the gap. These are usually, well, always, less expensive than full-time staff, and sometimes the existing staff don't have all the expertise necessary for a particular project, and so bringing in accountants from a specialized firm is, is very helpful. Any questions, Mina?
Thank you very much. We appreciate you guys addressing this. We, we hear a lot of people concerned with use of consultants, and it's good to know that you can save money because you don't have to pay benefits and all that, so, council?
I'd like... The only thing I can make to comment on the subject, that's true. Sometime we don't have a staff to expert on the subject matter, but we need to be hired the consultant, but that's not me. We need to hire the consultant all the time. Need to make every effort in turn to want to make sure all the matter is solved, but if not, this is necessary to go outside for the consultant. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to kind of piggyback on what Paul said. You know, consultants is one of those things that, and I myself, you know, before I was in public office, you know, you always think, you know, why do we need that? And so, you know, I've been on both sides of it, and, and, you know, I looked through this stuff pretty thoroughly and, and I listened to what you guys are saying, and I, I do see that there's very useful specific things. I know Public Works has many projects that are very specific where we have to be in compliance with, say, like the wastewater stream plant. I know with Claire, your department, where you have to be in compliance with the audit, so forth, and same thing with Chris. So, there, in every, in every department, there's a certain, there's a certain specific need. And I get that, and I know sometimes it can be less costly to having a staff member and, and pay employees. A lot of people, the public will say, well, why do we, why do we pay, you know, well-paid staff if we're going to always go out for the expertise? Like, aren't these people that we hire knowledgeable? And, so that was a question, and Tom and I had this discussion today for quite a while, or yesterday, actually, and, you know, he kind of gave me his, his two cents on that, and, and, you know, a lot of it made sense. I, I do agree with, with Paul, though, that, you know, we're in a budget crisis right now, so I think moving forward, we just need to be very cognizant of every situation. We need, I know each, each situation is different, that we look at a consultant for XYZ. We need to look at each one and say, do we really, really need this right now? Because I, what I don't want is, I just want to make sure that our staff doesn't become, you know, using consultants as like a crutch, where we always just become so dependent on them, and we feel like if we go to council, the council's always, if we, you know, make a strong enough recommendation, council's going to give us that consultant. So, not to say you're, you know, staff's trying to be lazy or anything, but I tend to, if they tend to feel that that's always going to be the case, they'll tend to ask more and more. As you know, I've asked for warrants on many consultants today, and from all three of you, actually, on how much we've paid certain consultants, and just to kind of get an understanding of, of that. And I actually asked Tom about this, and I, and I would like to let the council know that I've actually am going to be asking Claire and give her some adequate time to do this, but I would actually like to see, you know, some general numbers of consulting prior to the, even the previous city manager's administration. Like, how much did Galt typically spend on consultants per year before our previous city manager, so I can look at it as it flowed through several administrations and see kind of where we're at compared to that, compared to our budget? Because I think it's going to be important information to look at when we start diving into budget and figure out where we're at with stuff, because there's going to be hard decisions made, and I just want to kind of get an understanding of what, what do we spend on stuff like that and, and everything. But I, I do understand the use of it, and so I know we rely heavily on recommendations from you guys in our reports, but I feel as, you know, representative of the public, I have to really ask hard questions about what is this consultant really going to do for us and why do we really need them? So, I just wanted to add that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Donna, would you please read the public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, "Members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the City Council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time the item is being considered."
Thank you. So, I do have some public, and then Mr. Skinner, I'm going to wait until yours comes up on the agenda. Okay. So, first up is Mike Guthridge, then second would be Bonnie Rodriguez, and then Jennifer Stegal, Mayor, and Jean Davenport after that.
Well, it's a long time since I haven't been in front of the council, but I think it's important why I'm in front of the council tonight. As you know, I'm one of the owners of the Galt Shopping Center up at Twin Cities Road, and I was on vacation. I came back and I got a little note. I got a note from our people in Sacramento saying, "Did you know what your garbage rate's going to be?" And I said, "No, why? Was it going a couple thousand bucks? Do you know what our rate went up? Anybody got an idea what our rate went up?" It went up from $18,000 to $104,000. $104,000, folks. Now, who in the hell is going to pay $104,000? I've got people right now that could take and pick that garbage up and do the same thing for a hell of a lot less, because I've contacted them, and they're in the business, and so on and so forth. So, I don't know who made, who made the decision to go with this contract, but somebody failed. Been in this town a long time. We've built a lot of product. We've built a shopping center and other things, and, and for this to happen today in Galt is a disaster. Now, I don't know how long it's going to take to get this thing resolved, but I'm going to tell you one thing. There's enough people and enough big shopping centers that in the city of Galt, they will have a lawsuit. And that, and that's not a scare tactic. That's not anything. I'm saying I can't pay $104,000. That's just foolishness. And I think, you know, this has been going on a while. I have a good friend in the county of Sacramento. He's been working on it for two years. So, how come all of a sudden, Galt just got on it here in the last, I don't know, what, six months, eight months, a year? It's been out there for a long time, he said, and maybe the, the county of Sacramento's been working on it, because he's part of it. So, I think the city ought to really get busy getting this resolved, because it's not, it's not going to get, I'm going to tell you, it could get nasty quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthridge. Next up, Bonnie Rodriguez, representing the Galt Chamber.
Good evening, council members. I'm actually here on behalf of one of our chamber members who was unable to be here, so I'm going to read a letter that she wanted read into, onto record, and I also have pictures and I'll pass, actually, I'll just go ahead and pass them so you can look at them as I'm reading. This, this is from Mary Berry. She's the owner of Central Valley Physical Therapy. She says, "My business is located on the, in the Save Mart Shopping Plaza next to Ace Hardware. We have been in business in Galt for 17 years. Over the last year, we have experienced an increase in people who are not associated with our plaza, bringing their personal and business trash to our dumpster," and that's what the pictures are of, "which has led to our dumpster overflowing with trash." um, which has led to our dumpster overflowing with trash. On one occasion, I encountered a man with a U-Haul truck full of trash actively dumping his trash into our dumpster. I sent him away after he told me his boss had instructed him to bring the truck full of trash to our plaza, to our dumpster and dump it. His business is not in our plaza. We have homeless people who pull trash out of the dumpster, go through it, and leave it on the ground strewn across the plaza. On several occasions, we have seen on security camera footage, large garbage bags of marijuana plants, soil, insecticide canisters being dumped in our dumpster in the middle of the night. We can then see other individuals pull that trash out, search through it, and leave it outside the dumpster, creating a large mess. Products including hypodermic needles, used condoms, used latex gloves, human feces have all started to show up in the area around our dumpster. Thanks to Mayor Lamson, we secured a padlock for us from Dave Accarez at Cal Waste. We have been able to keep the trash out of businesses who share the dumpster in, in the dumpster. However, in the last two weeks, since we started using the padlock, the people who, who were cornering to the plaza to dump their trash hasn't changed. They just deposit their waste around the dumpster instead of in the dumpster, again, creating a large mess. As our community moves forward with these astronomical increases in place, my concern is that we will see more people dumping their trash in and around dumpsters of businesses not their own, at the end of the cul-de-sacs, in public trash bins, on the side of the road, leading to more overflowing and progressively unsanitary conditions for the residents of GALT. The property manager shared the old Cal Waste bill with the new Cal Waste, and the new Cal Waste bill with us, which shows a price increase of more than six hundred and twenty-seven percent, in line with what you have heard from other businesses addressing counsel. I have not been visited or contacted by anyone from Cal Waste. I urge you to examine the contract the city has signed with Cal Waste to find a way to get out of it. There must be another way to meet the demands of the changes in, in regulations without putting the cost squarely on the backs of the business owners doing business in GALT. Thank you. So that's Mary's. And I just want to piggyback really quick on that because we personally at the GALT Herald and the Chamber have had the dump, the same dumpster issue. We got a padlock and they're pretty smart and they come and pull out the back pin, flip it over the other way and dump stuff in it. Um, it's just going to get worse as people don't want to have to pay for their own trash. So something needs to be done immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Um, Tom, city manager, is there, can we get together with the shopping center and kind of work with them a little bit on this? I, I don't think it's legal to dunk, dump your trash in, on the ground.
No, e- essentially what that is, is a, a matter of, um, uh, I guess two things. One, it's a theft of services from others. And so it's a, whoever's dumping is stealing the services of whoever is currently paying, uh, for that trash service. And so that's not legal. Uh, the, the, the second thing is that, uh, we, our waste ordinance or our solid waste ordinance has a provision in it that prohibits, uh, tampering with the, the solid waste of other folks, as well as recycling and other things. And so, uh, we, we can try to look at it from that perspective and, uh, and see what we can do. But ultimately, what, what, what we need, to the extent that it becomes a, a law enforcement theft issue, or a theft issue that, that law enforcement would look at, we, we need the particulars. We need to be able to try to find out who it is and, and, and who's dumping. And that might be the, uh, the, the matters that we would try to coordinate with folks at the, at the center.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is Jennifer, is it Steagle, Steagle Meyer? Okay, with kids come first.
How are you? Um, my name's Jennifer. We have this small business, the preschool, over in the complex off Twin Cities. And our garbage bill skyrocketed from a hundred and eighty-one dollars to over six hundred and fifty dollars. We can't afford that as, you know, our business depends on people who work. And if we have to keep passing that cost on to those people, they're going to go elsewhere to find childcare that's not going to cost them that much. Hence, our business going to be going under. And we just want to know what the city is planning on doing, or if there's anything that we can do besides having to pay these astronomical rates to help keep these small businesses here in GALT and not close down. Cause I see a lot of them and I spoke to a lot of other business owners who have the same issues. And it's really sad. Thank you.
And next, we have Jean Davenport with various subjects. Various.
Hey, everybody. I'm Jean Davenport. I live in the city of GALT. And I want to continue my discussion on the, on the garbage rates. And it was a nice presentation on, on the consultants and whatnot. Um, I don't think we've used as many consultants, um, since, Ted Anderson was the last city manager that did a lot of the work in-house. And he had people in place that did it. When Jason Berman took over, I think things changed and the ideology changed. And so that's where we're at. You know, at the last meeting, when we were talking about hiring R3 to become the consultant to look into the issues of, of the waste contract that we got, no offense, Mr. Hargren, but the, the fact that you said that making sure that Cal Waste and the city were in compliance with new state regulations, shouldn't that have been done the first time around? I mean, to, to revisit that, it should have been handled when you, when you had the contract with the consultant originally. And then to say to blame R3 is to assume information not in evidence. So why weren't things, I mean, I don't understand it. It's kind of like, to assume information not in evidence. I mean, information should have been given to us. We should have been able to deal with it publicly. Uh, it wasn't because how many times were entities or people asked about the rate and were not given an answer? I mean, publicly, I know the city manager was asked once and he didn't answer at all. And, uh, when Dave Accarez was approached about it, he didn't give an answer. So, you know, you can't assume anything if you don't have the information. So that, that statement kind of like falls on deaf ears as far as I'm concerned. Because the bottom line is, all the people that are going to continue to come to these meetings and they're going to talk to you about their garbage rates, which is totally unfair. I don't care what the law says. I don't care what it is. You should get the city attorney to write Sacramento and say, this is not something that we can sustain. What are we going to do? And then if we have to file suit against the state, we need to do, to do that rather than them suing you guys. Because it just doesn't make sense for this to go forward in this fashion. There's so many things that are wrong with the way this was handled. It's whether it's R3 or RD2, it doesn't really matter. The fact of the matter is, you guys need to start publicly stating what you want those consultants to do. So you, you can answer to the people that come here. And we don't publicly hear from you guys. You guys, we can't talk about it publicly. That's what the issue is for us. I think a lot of us, anyway. You guys aren't clarifying what we're getting into. And then you guys get behind the wall because you can't talk about it. Your hands get tied. That's not right. It's not right at all. So you should publicly say, all right, you want to hire this consultant. Next week, we're going to give you direction from the dais about what you, we want you guys to do. And I think that's fair. At least we'll know where you guys are going and what's going to succeed and what's going to fail, fail, and we can go forward with that. That being said, when Mark brought up at the last meeting too, about the, um, about the big sign that was going to go up on the highway, regardless if you like it or not, whether you're in favor of billboards or not, really you shouldn't have any weight on this. You're asking for forty-five hundred dollars when you're giving fifty thousand dollars for all these consultants to do something that's going to bring in over a hundred thousand dollars a year initially. Probably going to go up. It's, you know, I think it's, it's smart to look at this realistically. You say you're, there were over a million dollar deficit that the city's facing. You got a hundred thousand dollars, you know, I mean, it's not, it's not rocket scientists. Whether you like something or not, sometimes you just have to bite the bullet and say, okay, let's do this. That being said, that, along those lines, if you got a deficit, you want to take care of it right now. And you want to be able to breathe, whether you like this or not, think about opening a dispensary in the city and get with the chief and see how it can be viable. Because to get a dispensary in this city, I think it would knock out all the red, all the red ink that we have. I mean, honestly, and I don't know how the chief personally feels about it, but I just think it's something we need to consider. Because it's legal today. It's not, you can't go, you can go to Stockton and buy it. You can go to Lodi and buy it. You can go to Sacramento and buy it. Why don't we get that tax dollar and keep it home? So appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. All right, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Nothing.
Nothing to report.
Councilor Campion? Councilmember Lozano?
Uh, nothing to report, other than, uh, policy and innovation, Secog, Policy and Innovation Committee is meeting on next Monday. So I'll have something to report after that.
All right. And I don't either. Thank you. All right, information consent calendar. Can I get a motion to receive and file warrants for periods ending May 22nd, 2019? Requests for appropriation for increased usage of household hazardous waste services. I have four things, correct? Correct, okay. Can I get a motion? Moved by Councilmember Campion, second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Now we have pulled some things for discussion. The first item is the award of contract for consultant services for wastewater treatment plant optimization.
Yeah, I just had a few questions for you, Mike. And I apologize, I didn't get these to you in advance, but I had a ton of things I was trying to look through on the agenda and research. So, um, first of all, so if I'm understanding this correctly, our plant was reclassified from class three to class four, which comes along with some, some additional requirements and testing, um, which our staff, our wastewater staff is not knowledgeable on what to do. So you want to bring in Mr. Cordovis? Um, who's a, uh, someone we've used in the past. Um, I did do some research. It looks like we used him three times last year, I saw. So, um, to train our new supervisor that was promoted?
Correct.
And to, to be, to run the test, to be compliant, all that, right?
Correct.
So my question was, there was a reference to that we were down two staff members. Um, I didn't really understand what that was relevant to this, meaning like, um, if we're training the supervisor, but should, why do we not wait till we have those two positions filled and then train everybody at one time?
Yeah, it's kind of contextual. What I understand from staff and, and Mr. Clarkson may be here to provide some additional information. But probably at least the last five years or so, I think what's kind of been our situation is, is we've tried to bring folks in and it's such a competitive environment that they get trained up and go somewhere else kind of thing. And we weren't that competitive, I, I understand, uh, whether it's, you know, on, on compensation and whatnot, benefits. Uh, and, and through the most recent MOU, we feel now that we're much more competitive. But it still does take a couple of years to get somebody in, kind of train them up. So we've been kind of growing our own. And with that, we've just, uh, you know, been able to promote, uh, an internal candidate to the plant supervisor. So bringing Mr. Cordovis in, who's very well-versed in these matters, he can train our new plant supervisor. And also, as we gain, you know, fill these, these last couple of positions and hopefully, you know, like I say, keep growing our own kind of thing, we can retain them, uh, that, that he can then pass that information down. So we don't really have the time luxury to wait until we fill those positions because that, that requirement, uh, there is a time constraint on that zinc time schedule order. So for, I think later this summer, uh, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add, but that's really kind of what's driving it, why we need to get Mr. Cordovis.
So which leads me to my next question, where it said that there was time sensitive because these studies were due by summer. Well, at summer, I was just curious if, um, you know, was this something that snuck up on us? Cause if we were, if we were up, if our, if our plant was reclassified, I mean, when did that take place?
Believe, is that the 2016 or was that more recent? I'll defer to Mr. Clarkson.
Mayor, counsel, Clarkson, city engineer. Yeah, we were, uh, upgraded in December of 2017. Took us time to get through the budget process, to get through approvals and everything and what was needed by the state. And we, we saw that the positions that we had, the grades, the grade certification level went up that we have to have at the plant. And so we went into training. We've done all this. As far as you're saying, caught off guard. We had an employee that retired. I don't know, is this thing on?
I can hear you. We can hear you.
Um, we had an employee that retired in December. We went out and we recruited. Good job. That was done. We were, we thought that we would fill it from the outside, but it ended, ended up that one of our employees was very competitive. So that, that didn't change our numbers any. We were still down, we're down three operators right now. And so there's a lot of people doing, you know, overtime work. Um, this, this position for the Dan Cordovis that we have for the consultant, it's only about six hours a week. I'm there about twelve to fifteen hours a week, helping training, helping doing things that are out there. This is, this is what's happened for several years. It's been ongoing, except losing the plant manager. We had him for five years. But, um, that was just done in December. So you can't anticipate when the next person's going to go. And it is not a really quick, we bring somebody on in a week, they can do stuff. It takes over a year and a half to get the first certification. And now our plant requires the third grade, which is four to six years to get that. It's a long process.
Okay.
And we've, we've been fighting all along with this.
I just asked because it just said the reason we weren't going out to RFP. And I get that we, if we've had this, um, this particular person, obviously he's done some work for us, um, that we have this relationship. But I always just make sure when we are not going out to bid for something and you're asking for up to fifty thousand dollars. I mean, I'm hoping it doesn't go up that high, but, you know, so I just, you know, just to hand somebody fifty grand, even with the previous relationship, I just want to make sure, and it talks about time constraint, you know, we didn't have time to bid. Because I'm just wondering, why didn't we have time? Did this come out of nowhere? Did we just, you know, fall, you know, that's what I'm trying to get at, is how that happened.
I would like to add to that. When our supervisor indicated that he was going to retire, we've, we kept asking him to stay and he would stay for another six months. And then he said, okay, I'll do it another six months. So this went on for a period of time. He wasn't really giving us a, a detail. But when he did last November, um, in 218, I went out and I contacted probably well over ten agencies to see if I could have a grade of four at the plant, if I can get some consulting. This was just for having a certified operator come in and do part-time work for us. Nobody had anything. And I looked for quite a while. And so I started doing the duties myself back in January, which I'll continue doing the duties of the chief plant operator on this, uh, probably for the next year or so. And, uh, so we really looked hard. I looked hard to find somebody because I didn't have the time to spare, you know, for this. But I have to do it because there's nobody else out there.
So I'm assuming that we trained the supervisor and then if we, when we fill the operator one and two positions, then, then that supervisor can then, and train internally? Or is this going to be an ongoing thing? We have to have Mr. Mr. Dan come back and do for us?
We're, we're hoping that this, that this will, i- if we can keep the people we have, we have two that will probably become grade threes within the next year. We fill it with, we, we really can't tell if we're going to fill with certified operators or not, or OITs. That means they're not certified and that we have to work through. So we're just hoping that within this next year, we'll have enough certified operators, we'll have enough people staying here that we're not going to need additional assistance.
And the funding for this, this goes with my next J4. I'm kind of trying to mingle the two questions together. The funding for this comes from the O7?
Yeah, enterprise fund, wastewater enterprise.
Which comes from?
Rate pairs.
The rate.
On their, their annual, their.
Is this budgeted money from, that your department's budget or it comes from?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You can just move on to J4. He might have answered something on this one.
Well, I think, don't we have to vote on this one?
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, can I get a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Dan Cortovinus for an optimization services at the wastewater treatment plant in the supplemental amount of up to forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars? Can I get a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Next subject, award of contracts for the supervisory control and data acquisition software upgrade.
So my questions on this were just, just, does this have to do with some of the things we voted on? So my questions on this were just, does this have to do with some of the things we voted on earlier in the year to put in the safety net? I guess I would consider it, you know, that we started, there were some new protocols and things we started putting in place. It seems like it was kind of some of that, is this more of that?
There was, yeah, there were some sensors that we were basically purchased to put into the lift stations to monitor those. And the data that those sensors send out, it goes to the supervisory control data acquisition system. So this is basically to upgrade our system, which is, as I understand it, three, three going on, four years old?
Yeah, we purchased it five years ago.
Okay.
And it took a year to get installed because we were constructing. But I'll add a couple of things. This, the SCADA system is separate than what was voted on, or what we approved several months back. There's two separate systems. This is a, this is a system that we have used for the last five years at the plant to collect all of our data and all of the instrumentation. The company no longer is going to, they've put us off for two years. They've kept supplying us technical support the last two years, but it's an old, it's an old model and they, they're just not going to help us anymore with it. Because they're, they're, they want us to go to upgrade or go to somebody else.
Right, yeah, I understand software and upgrades and all that. So basically, this is, this is just to, we have to upgrade the software in order to get the support, to continue the support that comes along with.
And the timing was just coincidental.
It was a two-year, so two years we have to renew that support again? It looks like it was a two-year stretch?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all I had, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, thank you, Mark.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution number one, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with F&amp;M Electric and Machinery Incorporated, doing business as Wonderware California, to provide the software license and support for the city's supervisory control and data acquisition system for, in the amount of, or for the amount of $44,700? And two, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services contract with John Wooton Integration to ensure integration of the new software for the amount of $6,250. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Motion made by Vice Mayor Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Campion, roll call vote please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. All right, schedule matters. Public hearing. Do we open it? Open it? Okay. All right, Ms. Tyson. Asterisk, schedule update.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Tonight, we are bringing forth to you the midterm budget. This is the public hearing evening. We're going to look at the fees, the capital projects, and budget adjustments for fiscal year 1819 and 1920. The midterm budget project is collaborative effort of the interim city manager, the department directors, and the finance staff. We've spent several months evaluating and analyzing the data, and the results are being presented to you tonight. The adopted budgets are for a two-year cycle here at the city of Galt. That approval was done in June of 2018. This evening, we are presenting the master fee schedule update, capital improvement program, and budget amendments for the two fiscal years. Master fee schedule update. Fees are implemented to cover the cost of public service that are requested by businesses and residents. These fees include those services that protect, exclude, excuse me, those services that protect health, safety, and welfare of the general public. So the city of Galt master fee schedule complies with Prop 26, which prohibits government agencies from charging more for a service than the reasonable cost of providing that service. The proposed fee schedule provides each fee from the prior fiscal year, 1819, and the new fiscal year, 1920, with references to information used to determine the proposed rates. Most fee increases are based on CPI. Some fees are limited by market rates, primarily in the parks and recs fees. Many of the city fees are below cost. Many of the fees listed in this master fee schedule have already been approved by council or other authority, but are listed here to provide a comprehensive report. Examples of those previously approved items are measure A fees, which are in this document, are set by the county. The refuse rates that we've talked about are by contract. And impact fees have been set by prior council resolution. So with that, if there are no other questions, I think all three of these items are presented to you separately. There is a recommendation, K1, for the master fee schedule update.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm going to open the public hearing to receive comments. And do you want council comments first or public? All right. I have a master fee schedule increase in parks and rec by Craig Skinner. He's representing youth, youth sports.
Hello, how are you folks doing tonight? Don't mind me, I'm sorry, a little nervous, never done this before. Have some parents here with us tonight, representing, not everyone, of course, can make it. Just a couple of questions before you guys looking at doing this, increasing the fees on the kids, which is actually probably the easiest target, I hate to say it. Just a couple of questions, has the council studied the parks and recs budget? Such as the staff, wages, job descriptions, and the overall profit the flea market's making? Because that was here to pay for parks and rec. Not sure all the money's going there, pretty sure it's not. Don't know if any of you folks have ever been to any of the public, you know, events for youth sports. If you have, I'm sure you've seen the fields falling apart. Infrastructure is horrible, not investing back in what we have, fields don't work, as far as the scoreboards, holes in tarps, getting stuff in plastic bags, as far as T-ball's concerned. They see what fees are below cost, we haven't seen new equipment. It's unsafe, I get helmets from 89 that you want to peel on little girls. We talk about concussion issues, we talk about a lot of things. Communication is horrible. You want to increase our fees, this will be, I think, the second time in two years we're looking at almost a 20% increase here. There is no discount for multiple family discount. County youth soccer, they found a way to make it a little more economical. They give you a break for multi-people in the family. We get new balls for each kid. We get first aid kits. Parks and Rec, we get no first aid training, which is ridiculous. We do with kids, something might happen to a kid, something might happen to an umpire. There's no safety precautions at all. As us as coaches, we're volunteered, we don't get paid. I get emails from people, hey, have you guys contacted us? That's not my job. I don't get paid to take care of parks and rec. I volunteer because we have kids. That's what we do. There's no, there's no one to be contacted, I've left messages for Monica. I have left a message for Armando, I think his name is, or something of that nature. I don't get calls back, I deal with Monica. Unfortunately, the city's employees deal with the blunt of the people at the games. No bosses out there show their face, they'd rather tuck tail and hide, which is ridiculous. You want to increase crease, but we don't see no improvements for anything for these kids. It's unsafe. It's absolutely ridiculous. And I'm sorry if I'm getting off topic here, because I'm very emotional about this. It makes me upset that we have a parks and rec department that should be thriving, that is made for kids. But we're talking about how we don't have no money, we want to increase fees. You're targeting the easiest people, and that's parents, who will do anything for their kids. There are ways to work around this, and I think you folks can really do some damage, investigate, see where our money's going, because we want to know. We want to know where the money is going, every which way, shape, or fashion. You're talking about putting up a billboard, I heard, parks and rec, is that going to go to parks and rec? Is that going to go to increasing, you know, improving fields? Is the flea market sustainable? If we haven't made money, then that's bad business, then we should all be fired for operating a bad business. Get rid of it, dissolve it. We've lost soccer, Parks and Rec has lost soccer, they've lost baseball. You'll lose softball, and you will lose basketball as well. So, please reconsider and think about that and investigate where our money's going because, like I said, unfortunately, we don't have enough people here, and I wish they were here. They're very upset. Lack of communication, like I said, equipment's ridiculous, the fields are ridiculous. Men's league gets charged less than us, you look around us, you're talking about Elgrove and everywhere else. Men's league is 450 here, it's 750 everywhere else. We get pushed to the side, each team is $1,200, each, each individual youth team is $1,200. And we get the short end of the stick. We get pushed to McCaffrey fields, which are ridiculous, if you folks go look at them, there's weeds everywhere, the field is not safe, the fences are falling down. I mean, go out here, I mean, I don't know if any of you folks have ever been to a youth event, I'm sure when your kids were probably young, but probably not in the current times. So, I hope you folks investigate that before you approve any type of pay increase or any type of fee increase. Please investigate this, because you guys hurt the youth, we're not going to do anything good for our city. We're not going to be able to build camaraderie and show the city of Galt and the kids of Galt that we actually care about them, because we are starting to seclude people now. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Craig.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? You are able to come up without filling out a card at this time, since it is a public hearing? Okay, council, any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, and, if I may.
Hold on one second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do I close it before council comments?
Yes, you can close it now. If you'd like to have the benefit of some, any additional discussion you foresee, then you can wait to close it later, but it would be appropriate to close the public hearing now.
Okay. Public hearing is closed. Sorry, Councilmember Lozano, go for it.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions in regards to the, specifically the youth T-ball softball registration. I noticed in the staff report, and I apologize for not bringing this up before, but the gentleman kind of triggered a question for me. Under park and recreation, we have youth T-ball and softball registration. It shows that T-ball, the recommendation is to be increased by $10. And if you go down to the other age groups, boys, six years of age is a $5 increase. And then it, there's no increase at all for seven and eight-year-old girls. And then minis, I'm assuming that's going to be softball. There's a $10 increase, then it goes to $5 for minor. So anyhow, what I'm asking, I guess, is there's, there's a variance in increased fees and/or not in this, in this part of the report, specifically the one that was brought up with the girls softball. How, how do we get to that?
So in, in past years, what we did is we had a separate fee for each one of the age groups. So you would have minis, like you saw here last year, at 90, 95, and then $100. It would go up by $5 increments across the board. I've noticed through looking at other groups' fees, that there's a standard fee for certain age groups. And so what I did is I started grouping these together. You'll see that there's not an increase for the majors at 13, 14. And what I did is I've, I've put together a cost sheet for the total combined group for an overall cost analysis for the whole girls' age group. There, there's different, I mean, you can go back and do a tiered pricing. This way, it's showing an overall cost to the program for the girls' softball.
Okay. I, I guess my, my question is, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around, around this, based on my experience in youth sports, although it's a little different when I was involved in it. It was a nonprofit youth sports organization, and so it wasn't necessarily tied. But we had, we had a fee for T-ball because T-ball was significantly less expensive to equip and run, just based on the nature of it being T-ball. And then, it was pretty much the same fee for everybody else. And, and again, my experience was just running the nonprofit organization to keep umpires playing in uniforms and things like that. And so I, I think it's just a little confusing, at least for me, to have these different rates. I mean, I recognize it's either $75 or $100 is what is proposed. But it looks like we're, we're making a different adjustment for each group. And I appreciate your explanation, Armando, but I just can't wrap my head around that.
It kind of goes back to where you were saying, that these are all the same programs, the minis, minors, and majors. That's where they're playing softball, they have umpires, they have the same thing. What we did is we, in the previous years, we had placed a tier on it. So you wouldn't go from 75 to 100, you'd go from 75 to 90. And then this year, if we would have kept to this, the rates probably would have been 90, 95, and 105. So what we did is we put together, because the, the girls' majors teams, we don't have enough to fully fund that group. We're s- We are losing close to $6,000 if we, if we ran that as an individual group. I'm trying to put these costs together to make it a little more friendly, to not, just to show it in a different way. You're still collecting the amount, we're still losing the amount of money that we're losing. It's just a different way to show it, in a different way to collect fees for it.
Okay. Another question I had real quick is, what do the fees go toward? And again, I, it was brought up by Mr. Skinner, and, and, and I certainly, back in many years ago, when I was involved in the organization, similar, was asked the same question. And we had a breakdown of costs that we would have to pay the government agency to use the fields that took care of mowing, and, and then we had a line item for field maintenance, which is chalk and all of that. What, what do these fees go toward?
Well, basically the same things. We have staffing for the games, umpires, depending on the age division, scorekeepers, to replace equipment, to positive coaching alliance training, uniforms, trophies. GSSA requires us to register the teams with them. So I have a cost breakdown for every, every program we have in here.
And the background checks go into that as well?
Actually, that is not, there is no cost for volunteers for background. They are fingerprinted, but I believe there's, that is at no cost, is that correct? Okay. It's a $13 cost, but is, that cost is not in here then?
And that's borne by the volunteer?
No. By the city.
But that's not allocated?
So that's, that's an expense?
It's not listed in here, though.
Okay. And, and again, excuse me for the questions, but the, so for T-ball, the city runs the T-ball program, which is boys and girls, is that correct?
Correct, we run boys and girls up until age six, and then girls from seven to 14. GYB takes over the boys' program at age seven.
Has, and again, this is just for information, doesn't necessarily have to do with the rate. Has there ever been a GYB for girls' softball?
No, I've talked to a couple of different programs. Like CSD, they don't offer a softball program for the older girls, you go into nonprofits. Lodi has age groups that range for the nine, 10, from $110 to $115 to the 11, 12s, and $135 for the 13 and 14-year-olds.
Okay. And we're not collecting any mon, any of this money is not going into, that we're collecting is going, my understanding is it's not going into capital improvement? We have no, we're not able to save any money to?
We have our revenues that will offset our expenditures to a certain extent, but not fully.
Okay.
I believe at one time you gave us a whole list of how, where the money goes and how everything's pretty much underfunded.
Correct. The city went through a fee study, I want to say about four or five years ago. The spreadsheet was created for us, and what we do is we update it with the minimum wage increases, any type of increase to costs or services. So we just make the adjustments on an annual basis to what those are.
Can you refresh my memory on what minimum wage went up to? I apologize. Can you refresh my memory on what minimum, minimum wage went up to? I apologize.
Well, over the last three years, it went from eight fifty. I think we're currently at twelve, and I think we're getting one more step in two thousand nineteen. Every year, we're going to get another step until we hit, yeah, up until fifteen dollars an hour.
That's, that's affecting everybody, I think.
And, and the majority of our employees are minimum wage employees.
And this went in front of the Parks and Rec Commission?
Yes, it was approved on the February thirteenth meeting.
Discussion's closed. The hearing's closed. I have a hand. What do I do? No?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Armando, on these, as far as the program, based on these fees, is that full cost recovery for the cost of the, of operating the
No.
Program?
No. I, I determine those by market rate. I, I have a spreadsheet here from looking at our neighbors, because in the past, council has asked us what Elk Grove does, what Lodi does. And we are, this, uh, this was done in two thousand eighteen, and we're still under every one of those prices that they approved in two thousand eighteen.
Do you have any idea as to what the subsidy is on behalf of the city for each one of these programs?
I do, and each one of these sheets will provide that information that I have here, that I provide the-
Oh, so for each age group, it varies?
Yes.
Okay. Generally speaking, what is their percentage?
We, we try and get, so we, we've broken this down into hard costs, soft costs. And again, this is direction that we've received in the, from the previous administration, where we're accounting for the cost to use the registration program, to taking registrations, those type of costs. Then we add the central service cost to these programs. The direction was to get us close to our hard cost. And we try and do that. In some cases, we're very, very close, and some were far off, depending on the program.
So there's no general number?
No. I have not been given direction to provide, to be within X percentage of the hard cost or overall cost.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Farmer, did you have something?
Yeah, but-
He, he spoke, so we have to have our discussion. That, that part's closed, so let's finish our-
All right. Well, my comments are about all of the Rich and Kurt were asking about. So, Armando, between T-ball, how many ga, roughly how many, I, I coached minis, minors, majors. I've coached all these. I played adult for many le, I'm familiar with the, the facilities. I'm familiar with how many games. I'm familiar with all of that. So you were asking if any of us were. I very much am, so I, I know, I, I know from the inside. T-ball and how many games are these teams getting, Armando? Like eight games each season?
Between eight and eleven, depending on the age group. They'll do an eight-game season, and then go into playoffs, and then that would determine they could play one game in playoffs, or go all the way through the championship, play eleven. Sometimes when there's, uh, ten teams, we'll do a nine-game regular season, just so everybody can play each other once. But they'll get a minimum of eight games.
So just give me an approximate between T-ball and the next age group, seventy-eight-year-olds and minis and minors. Roughly in each division, how many teams do you think sign up, average? You can give me a conservative number if you want.
Um, I can give you what we estimate, if you'd like.
Okay, yeah.
So for T-ball, we estimated, this is, uh, T-ball, boys and girls. We estimated a hundred forty-five participants.
So say twelve players per team.
Uh, we try and keep that to ten, between ten and twelve.
Fourteen teams?
Yeah, but it, in that, in that group, some coaches are more desired, so they'll take on more than the, what we have. They'll take on ten to twelve, sometimes up to thirteen kids. Instructionals, you're looking at thirty-six. Instructional seven and eight, looking at fifty-six. Girls' minis, we are looking at sixty-six. And this is where we try and do the, the number twelve per team, the minis, minors, and majors.
Mm-hmm. Right. So I got that number from you.
Um, fifty-six for the minors and thirty-six for the majors.
Those are fifty-six players?
Yeah.
Thirty-six.
Okay, so it ranges, it's ranging from fourteen teams with T-ball up to six teams for some of the higher, right?
Right.
I got thirty-six, yeah.
So, I mean, just doing some quick math, you got a hundred, a hundred dollars for majors, you got seventy-five for T-ball. These are the proposed rates. I mean, we're roughly looking at like fifty thousand dollars to run this program, is what we're collecting for them.
I can tell you what we estimated for minis, minors, majors is fifteen thousand dollars. Instructional seven, eight, we estimated four thousand two hundred. Instructional six, two thousand seven hundred.
Okay, so you don't have to give me the numbers, but T-ball, if you say you got fourteen teams in T-ball, you're basically, that's twelve thousand just for T-ball. Seventy-five dollars a player.
Ten, yeah, ten thousand.
So, I mean, T-ball, like, T-ball, they don't use umpires. They don't even use the fields. That, we have staff comes out, sets a backstop, we give them some gear, which, to be honest with you, and, and, I mean, you know, Armando, the gears can be less than stellar at times. And again, don't take any of this personally. I'm just talking about the program itself, because I've been there. I just, what I'm saying and what I'm trying to reverberate from the community, and I've, I've been, I've been getting inundated with, with, with people coming to me. And, and some of this is, you know, been going on for a long time, some of it, you know, and, and we all know why. I mean, you know, Parks and Rec, we're like rubbing two nickels together. I know the costs don't seem appropriate, like, they don't feel like the money's going to the right places. I, I have, I, I do struggle with finding out where we spend nine hundred dollars to run a T-ball program that plays eight games. I, I mean, I know there's staff costs, and you have this and that, but I, I mean, what I want, whatever I want to remind people is, and I know these costs, these programs don't cover themselves. Parks and Rec never covers itself. I mean, we can sit there and try to fight and make it recoup its money, but, I mean, the bottom line is, these programs are so critical. I remember having players that, I knew certain players on my team that I coached, this was the only time they're ever going to play sports. I just looked at that girl and said, she's never going to play sports after this time. These, these are not kids that can afford travel ball, or, you know, that kind of sport. I mean, they had grandma dropping them off, and Uncle Johnny picking them up, because mom's working two jobs at Carl's Jr., right? That's, I'm not exaggerating, that's an exact scenario. So, I mean, a hundred dollars for a family to have their nine-year-old play ball, you know, maybe a hundred dollars is an odd to some people. To other people, a hundred dollars is like an eighth of their paycheck for the month. And this is a rec program. This is trying to get people in the community into a program that they can play sports, maybe for one time in their life. And, and I think my overall problem with, with this is, is, yeah, we're in a budget crisis. I, I get that, and we need to find, make some hard decisions. But we're sitting, we're sitting here looking for, you know, I, I mean, to cut expenditures and find money that we need to fix our budget to go off. It's like my wife and I buying a new car, and we decide, oh, we have overspent, we can't afford this car, and then going to my daughter and saying, I gotta cut your, your allowance. I mean, why are we go, I, I feel like we're, we're, we're seriously looking for five and ten dollar, it's such petty stuff here, I think. I don't know. I mean, I know it, it sounds bad, you know, in the middle of a budget, but I, I've just, I've been, I just don't like it. I don't, I don't like it. I'm not going to vote in favor of raising any of the sports fees. I don't have a problem with the other fees, with the, with the, with the facilities rentals going up. I think there, those are appropriate. I see some other rates going up. But generally, what I'm seeing at all these rates that impact the community directly as far as sports and rentals of facilities, the ones I see the most that come to me, or that I'm seeing in here, are the sports programs. And, and to me, I'm just, I'm not, not okay with it. I, I think, you know, I, I think we need, we have some serious work to do in our, in our Parks and Recreation program. And I, I think everybody that runs the program, including, including our director, Armando, and, and our staff, they're all trying to do their best. You know, we're trying to, you know, there's positions that we're trying to create to alleviate this, but in a budget crisis, we're not sure if that's going to happen. So we're, we're all trying to find solutions here. But in the time being, I don't think the answer here is to raise fees on the one thing that our community uses the most. So I, I have other stuff to talk about on this, but I think I'm just going to leave it at that right there.
Um, Armando, I've been hearing a few things. I know it's, it was kind of a crazy year because of the rains, and the games kept getting rained out, so there was a little communication, you know, games getting canceled and, and things like that, and hate to be, hopefully we can find some other things in here to pick on you for. Claire, anyway, would it be possible for you maybe to, if, if, the, have a, a coaches' meeting just to kind of go over, re, review the seasons and kind of review it with them, and see if they, they want to, they want communication, so maybe they'll actually meet with you and talk about that?
We've had a, we have a coaches' meeting at the beginning of the season. We, um, I informed city manager that as soon as the season ends, and I think today's the last day, if it wasn't last night, that we'll be sending out an email asking for suggestions and
Okay.
comments, if they'd like to provide them to us. We've, last week, we sent out a mass email to all the coaches, informing them, giving them all our email addresses and contact information, and the progress of where to go through. I, we haven't heard from anybody. Mr. Skinner stated that he left me a voicemail. I'm sorry, I have yet to receive it. I don't know where he left that voicemail. It wasn't on my, my voice line. There is another Armando, but maybe it got transferred to his within my department. I know he's met with Monica several times. I know he's spoken to Rami, our site supervisor, so we're, we're here, we're willing to talk. You know, Mr. Vice Mayor Farmer, you said, you know, not to take it personal. It's hard to take it person, not to take it personal. You know, I pride myself in, in the work that I do in this community. My kids have been in these programs. I live in this community, and it's hard to not take it personal when I think that I'm trying to do the best that I can with what's provided to me. These are recommendations to you, and you guys can provide direction to me and how you want these fees to be. I'll be glad to enforce it. This is what I've been directed to do in the past.
I appreciate, thank you for letting me know about all the communication and things. And we hear communication in almost every department. That's just something that happens in, anytime there's an organization, school district, anywhere, there's, sometimes the communication doesn't get out, or it does, and people, it skims through, or it goes to junk mail, so we appreciate you emailing them.
Let me pause.
Armando, just a, a quick question. The fees increase, I believe, due to the minimum wages and some other costs, right?
The, the majority of the fee increase is going to be to the, because of the minimum wage cost. You know, there are costs that are going up with like our contract for our umpires, for our adult leagues. There's, but a lot of it is just the minimum wage. And you're going to start seeing this even go up more once we hit the fifteen-dollar range, because we're, we're compacting into our supervisor rates. We haven't increased any of our, you know, everybody's thinking we're getting this big raise, and none of us are. It's, the only raises that are really coming are for the minimum wage group. And now they're getting close, and Cora can verify this, that they're going to start bumping those wages, wages up also. My, at one point, my, my coordinators were making three to four dollars more than a lot of the field workers, and now it's pretty close. It's, I believe, to me, not worth it to be a supervisor, because might as well just be a worker and not worry about any of the issues.
Right.
So the other thing is, is that fees increase is almost twenty-five percent or twenty percent?
It, it will, it will range between program. Again, I, I'm not just looking at our costs, our programs. I'm looking at market rate around here. There's, there's no way that this city is going to allow us to raise rates to one cover cost, because we, then we wouldn't have a program to run. There, we would, nobody would sign up if I had to recover full cost. I look at what Lodi does, I look what C S, C S D does, what they're charging for these programs. And we're, again, I'm, we're still under the two thousand eighteen comparison that I did last year for a majority of these programs.
Yeah, but my, my, you know, is, 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 is youth T-ball. You know, these are the kids. You know, these, uh, these are the kids, that, that's their future is. And twenty-five percent fees is, I, I know there is an increase, is, is, is all the cost to it, but twenty-five percent increase is a little bit off from my mind.
Some of them aren't going up at all.
No.
Some of them are going up five dollars, some aren't going up at all.
I have one more thing to add, real quick, just to shift gears a little bit on something. I had some people ask me, Armando, we've always charged, we've always charged non-resident citizens more on the facility rentals, right?
Uh, like the Shibbole Center?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
There, there's a non-resident fee. We've had very few non-resident fees. We've taken away a lot of those, because again, we're, we're a community. We're a Campo, Thornton, Harold. But when it comes to the rental of Littleton Center, there is a non-resident fee.
And then relating to that same question with the sports programs, I've been asked, you know, why are we not charging, you know, non-resident fees? I used to know, I remember when we used to charge players, like for adult league, if you were from Lodi or whatever, you'd charge more, but people just, I mean, we just found it was counterproductive to people playing, and then staff time to keep track of it, and you just said it wasn't, wasn't, it just wasn't reasonable to do that.
At one time, we had three levels of fees. We had the resident fee, the high school boundary fee, and then the non-resident fee, non-high school fee. It was determined, I want to say about ten years ago, to remove the, the resident, the non-resident fee, because again, we are a community that serves more than just Galt.
Right. And so, you know, going back to the minimum wage, we, we get all that. But, you know, like, to think about, you know, I played adult league, and I remember it's, you know, adult league has been going up, and now I think it's going to be four hundred and twenty-five or something like that.
Four fifty.
Four fi, yeah. So anyways, you know, but you basically have ten people, it's forty dollars a player, forty-five dollars a player now. You have T-ball, it's nine hundred, and I know they're getting shirts, and they're getting some gear. But these parents are dedicating their time. I mean, I don't know if you know, but Mr. Skinner over here has six children. He has six kids, and his wife is ill. And so for, for, for him to take his time to even be here tonight, to say, you know, I'm upset because we're, him and other parents are putting in their time, and, and they're, they're, you know, fighting up here for, for, you know, five or ten dollars, it, you know, it's not like he probably couldn't afford the five or ten dollars. But it's the principle of the matter. It's the principle that, that we can sit up here, and, and I'm just going to say, we can sit up here and we can approve fifty thousand dollar consulting. And whether that consultant's worth every penny, I'm not saying it's not, because there's, that's a different, you're comparing apples to apples. But we can do that, and then we'll sit here and talk about ten and five dollar sum for the community. I just, I mean, I just want to remind the council that as we go into this budget cycle, it's going to be really, really tough. We're going to be making some super tough decisions. But I think we need to remind ourselves that kids are going to be, that our kids are first, and we need to try to fight for these programs that is just the, the tiniest little bit of, you know, something that, you know, our community can use and, 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 and put their kids into, and, I mean, there's just so many more things. I, I think we need to all really think on that really hard when it comes time to make those decisions, because I'm, I personally am going to fight hard for the stuff, and so.
And, you know, especially about that youth program, if, as, you know, we can revisit that fees, if, if the council agree, or will move forward.
Is that a motion?
No.
Oh.
Uh, Mr. Skinner, did you want to make a quick comment? Can you please come to the-
I'll be honest with you, sir, I'm not trying to, I can understand you take your job personal. I really do. I would never want to offend you in any, any shape or fashion. Just a quick question. As far as a comment, I know Parks and Rec's supposed to subsidize fees that we're not making as far as adequacy compared to around us. We might be losing money. But I just want us to remember also facilities, how our facilities are looking compared to around us, why the fees are more expensive around us. For instance, I try to save Parks and Rec's money. You go, basketball fees are going up, another subject. You look at our schools, there are electrical plates sticking up at least an inch and a half off the ground. That will cost us a lot of money, millions of dollars to sue. And trust me, parents will sue. You know they will, if you hurt their kid. I'm just asking us to be smart. That's all I want. Don't, don't take away from the kids. That's all I want too. I mean, there's a lot of kids, like Mr. Farmer said, is, a lot of kids will never play sports again. A lot of parents are single parents out there trying to struggle. We give them rides as volunteer coaches, things of that nature. If we, if we increase their fees, what are they going to do? I mean, I'd be very honest with you, what are they, what are they going to do? They're going to sit at home, play video games, most likely get in trouble, and end up seeing this gentleman, probably. That's what, that's not what we need. That's not what we need. We're a small town. We could be better than this. We could be stronger than this. We have to be strong. That's just, I'm, like I said, I'm not trying to criticize this gentleman. He has a hard job. I'm sure he does. I just wish that we would honestly look outside the bounds and be a little more open-minded, say, okay, yeah, it might be one thirty-five here, or Lodi, but facilities are a lot nicer, bathrooms are clean. it might be 135 here or Lodi, but facilities are a lot nicer, bathrooms are clean, things are open to the public, things are getting better. That's why people will pay those prices. No one's going to pay those prices here if things do not get better. We will lose it and we'll have no jobs. I have no one to talk to. So I, I just, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And just please also accept all the sports, basketball, they're all going up tremendously. And it's just, it's not right. We really have another way to make money. So, thank you.
Mr. Skinner, I just have a couple of comments. And I, and I really am not one to like to compare our community to other communities. I know we do it because we have to benchmark just for, for pricing. But I will tell you this, in the community north of us, those kids pay like, if, the leagues pay like $15 to $20 per player for a full year for field usage. Now, those fields aren't in the shape that they're in up there because of youth sports providing money to the organization. The reason they're in this condition they're in is because the youth sports organizations go above and beyond and do field maintenance on their own during their season to make them nicer. And so that's, earlier when I was asking, has there ever been a nonprofit youth sports organization running softball? There hasn't. And, and, you know, I, I, I think our Parks and Rec staff do an awesome job for what we have. I think they have put a lot of work into this report. I appreciate Armando, you and your staff. I dealt as a nonprofit board member of a youth sports organization. I dealt with parents and coaches and it's a tough job. But on the other hand, we really need to look at what we want as a community. And the folks that are here in the room tonight that are part of youth sports organizations or their, their children play in our recreation programs, it's really up to you what you want. So think about that as we move forward. If we want to improve things, that you can't always look to, to the government to help improve things, you know? I mean, we've got an awesome opportunity with all the folks in the room tonight to, to help move that forward. I would, I would suggest, and I'm a, I'll let Mr. Sandu speak again because I think he wants to.
Oh, you're good. I, I would make a, a motion that we not increase any of the youth sports fees for this year. But next year, if we need to, I, I would be prepared to take another look at that. And so my motion would be the youth sports programs.
Which, which ones specifically?
Youth softball and base T-ball registration, youth basketball.
But do the same issues apply in basketball? See, I'm not.
I think they do.
Schools might be raising the prices too.
Well, I, but my concern is, is that, you know, we, there, there are ongoing costs. Like Armando has said, we have ongoing costs in terms of salary increases, maintenance operation. We have a declining revenue from the flea market. It's being subsidized to the tune of, you know, millions of dollars. So I, I have a, you know, not to pick on any particular program in the city. I just think that, you know, it's prudent to look at where we are financially. I, I don't know that, you know, a $5 increase will make that big a difference. Some of these rates are not increasing at all. So that motion actually does nothing, in, in my opinion. I, I have a hard time trying to reconcile, not trying to at least stay up with what our actual costs are in terms of salaries for these employees to run the program when we already significantly subsidize them. That is my concern. And I, I, I certainly agree with what you say, Rich, in terms of having, you know, nonprofit organizations assist. And that is big in other communities and I think it could make a, a huge difference in this community. But I don't know that I'm willing to simply not look at a very reasonable adjustment to an already subsidized system.
Ask a question, sir? I'm sorry. I know that's probably past my time, but then would be, would you rather be in favor of cutting the programs from the kids? Just because this?
I didn't say cut the programs.
I understand, but I'm just saying, sir, we've all known about this $15 wage increase for the past five years. And for us to use that as a crutch is pretty pathetic, I'll be very honest with you, because you guys are businessmen here, businessmen. They're prepared to run their business. They knew this increase was coming. For us to keep on using that as an excuse of why we have to increase it, we should have been planning.
No, I, that, it's, it's not a crutch. It, it's a fact.
I understand.
And it's being phased in over time. And those, those, those costs are increasing annually to the city. So all this is doing is trying to keep up with what some of those costs are. Not all costs are included here, as, as Mr., as Armando has indicated. So I, I don't think it's a crutch. And the city has recognized that there have been increased costs. They have not ignored that. And, and taking this type of action is what does address that on a, on a regular basis. I mean, the city does this on an annual basis. They evaluate what those costs are. They look at the CPI and they look at other reasonable adjustments. So I don't think it's, it's fair to, to indicate that, you know, we're using it as a crutch or have ignored it.
Well, that's all I hear. I'm sorry. That's why I keep on here.
Well, again, if, if you come to the meetings or if you look at what the past budgets were or what the past increases were on the fees, then you would see that, no, the city has not ignored this. They've actually taken steps to look at it in a progressive manner.
Okay. And line of, in lieu of the flea market, that's not making money, so we're going to keep on running that route?
It, it still makes money. It doesn't make as much money as it used to. I mean, that's really kind of getting off topic here.
Yeah, I mean.
But it, it has. And, 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 you know, the, the, that, that whole venue with internet sales has changed. Changed the, the retail landscape, not only for the flea market, but for any brick and mortar retailer. I mean, you look at that. I mean, those are, those are much bigger things than just that it's losing money. I mean, there are, there are factors here that are very complex, quite frankly.
Yeah. Well, I, I hope our city learns to adapt and change with those.
Yes, I agree.
Armando, I have two questions for you. Can you explain the, the relationship between golf, youth, baseball? Because that's kind of in line with what Rich is talking about. Let's, explain to the, to the public in here, what's the arrangement with golf, youth, baseball and, and how it pertains to Harvey Park and what they do and what the city does and allows them to do?
So it's still, it's the same arrangement that we have with other youth groups, County Line Youth Soft, or excuse me, County Line Youth Soccer, Golf Football Club, Junior Hawks, Junior Warriors. There's a $10 per player fee program where each one of the kids pays $10 to participate in that program for the year. That money goes into maintenance operations that, we can't fund our nor, normal maintenance from it. Has to be extra maintenance for that. For that fee, they get free use of all the, all the facilities. They get a reduced cost for lights. But golf, youth, baseball is probably the best example of a group that contributes to the city's facilities. They recently have redone the infield at Harvey Park, the two fields at Meadowview Park. They've put in a lot of money into the shade structures. I mean, they're, they're the primary users, yes, but they've also improved our parks by doing so. They've saved us quite a bit of money by, by volunteer coaches coming out and maintaining the fields. They have a certain standard that they, they hold those fields. But they're also giving priority over everybody else to use those fields.
Speaking of priority, I know there was a little bit of complaint about some of the championship games for the youth sports having to be played at McCaffrey and because of tournaments. And I know weather caused some overlap in schedules, but I think one bitter pill that I'm hearing a lot of is, you know, that schedules are bumped around and out-of-town tournaments.
Mayor, I, I think we need to stay on topic.
Yeah, we're supposed to be second.
On topic is the, is the fee schedule, not, 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 not the programs.
We're talking about the programs.
Well, no, we're talking about fees associated with.
Excuse me, but I'm talking and I would like, like to have that time to talk.
Sean, but, but it's not an agendized item.
What's not an agendized item? That we're talking about, he, we had a public comment that spoke about the fee program and what we're getting for those fees. I'm talking about what we're getting for those fees.
No, you're talking about switching things around. People got moved around.
Yeah, which is me, what we're getting for those fees. What is he getting for his $75 for his kid? He's getting schedules that are bumped around. He's getting emails in the morning that says, oh, by the way, your game's not tonight, it's tomorrow morning. They're getting less than 24 hours notice. This is what I'm talking about, what they're getting for their money.
I, I just think we're getting buried in minutia on, on things that, this is a bigger issue.
I make, I, I make a motion that we, we pass the schedule fee with the exception of all the youth sports. The adult sports can be raised according to the schedule, but everything that has to do with youth, I make a motion that we leave it exactly the way it is right now.
Just to step in, sorry, where you? I do believe we had a motion on the floor. So, and I think it might be worthwhile to clarify what the initial motion was because I think it sounds like they might be similar. I also have a recommendation that the way that it's currently presented to you in the agenda, there's a resolution. The resolution can be adopted as is, but to the extent that a motion is proposing to amend any specific fees, I would recommend that we be very specific about the amendments to Exhibit A to the resolution that will be adopted and point out specifically, if you can, perhaps by the page number and then the specific category that you propose not being raised or amended, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
City manager?
Mayor Lamson, members of the council. The other thing I would just suggest is as you identify those specific youth-related fees that you wouldn't want to raise, that perhaps it would at least be prudent for the council to acknowledge that, that those wouldn't be raised for the time being. As the council's aware, the city does have a very significant financial deficit, structural deficit that it needs to resolve and that the council has agreed with previous recommendation and directed us to work through a, a schedule of reviewing the affected funds that give rise to that structural deficit, one of which is the Culture and Recreation Fund. And so as we seek to find resolution to our structural deficit, I think that it will be important to be able to look at all of the areas of both expenditure and potential revenue so that you can be making a holistic decision later this summer as to what you're going to do with respect to cuts and what you're going to do with respect to revenues. And all I'm really saying is that if later this summer and by, by August, when you're making decisions, you decide to return to this particular item to raise these fees or to reconsider these fees, that you provide yourself the leeway to do so.
Thank you.
May, may I list out the youth programs that I've identified? I'm looking at youth T-ball, softball registrations. I'm looking at youth ball, basketball. Now, the question would be, do we raise the fees for the Aquatic Center for children? Or, and the swim team, the Galt Gators?
Well, the swim team is, it's like 50 cents, right, for admission?
No.
That's aquatics.
The Aquatic Center is going from $3.50 to $4 for youth, 5 to 12. $2.50 to $3 for toddlers. And teens will stay at, will go from 4 to 5.
So it's a 50 cent increase.
And the annual pass, is that going up or is that staying?
Well, that would, that would also be affected also. So depending on what you, what you're giving us instruction to do. And then the Galt Gators is going from $1.50 to $1.60.
I'm only referring to the youth T-ball, softball, and basketball. Not referring to the aquatics. That's what I'm referring to. I don't think a 50% increase of admission or that is going to, is significant enough.
I just want to make sure we're clear on what.
Thank you.
The recommendation is.
You're making.
So to clarify the motion, what I said earlier was to accept staff's recommendation with the exception of youth T-ball, softball registration, which is on page 22 of 27. And then in addition, on page 23 of 27, youth basketball. Keep those at the 2018-19 fee rate.
That's your motion?
Yes.
I second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Vice Mayor Farmer. Do we need to, are we all right, Ashley? Good. You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. We'll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
No.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson? Aye. Motion passes four to one. All right. Approve the proposed capital improvement program?
So, one minor comment on, on the action that was just taken. Those fees are part of the budget. We're going to talk about it in a little bit. So we may be coming back to you later with an amendment to the budget. But I'm going to go ahead and proceed as though those dollars are still there. Okay? But first, let's talk about capital improvement program. So, capital improvement program, this is a five-year program for the city's anticipated capital projects. Capital projects are construction projects or capital equipment costing $30,000 or more with a useful life of at least five years. The budgets for these projects do not include staff salary costs. The city CIP document also includes costs beyond the five-year timeframe for planning purposes. And the majority of the budget changes are being proposed for 1819 in this plan are from rollover of funding. In other words, most of these projects are multi-year. So some of the money is rolling over into 1819. We also have some increases in that year for budget appropriations for projects with newly allocated funds from state funds and water plant improvement monies. So we did this little schedule, basically the, the biggest items. I'm not going to go through them in much detail, but basically the capital projects span multiple fiscal years. And the budget of this plan is really for the two years you see up there. So we've kind of focused in on what the budget changes, the, the significant ones are for 1819 and for 1920. Excuse me, when looking through the projects, there are several projects that have minor revisions. So you'll see them in your documents, but these are the larger ones. Forest Street project was completed ahead of schedule, so there's an increase to 1819 and a decrease to 1920. The total cost of that project, because it did start earlier, was 369, almost 370,000. The transportation funds are allocated for two projects. You see up there Transit Operation Maintenance Center and the pavement project. There's Safe Routes to School Project, which is funded by grants and Measure A and a little bit of other money. California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation Contract is funding the firing range improvements. Fees from contractors are being used to fund the industrial water production well. And the, and the park development fees are being released from the Walker Park project for future projects. Any questions about capital improvement? Yes, sir?
I do. The park development fees, we've been over this before, but that's a, a fund that's not being touched right now. That's just sitting there waiting for the ability to add to it or maintain the improvements.
So.
Walker Park.
Do we have other monies, projects scheduled out of this money at this point?
No, my understanding is it's only for new park facilities. So there's none at this time.
Okay.
The, the money is not able to be used for any maintenance.
Right. And I guess, I guess the question is more, how far off are we from having the money to develop the next phase? And I, and I ask that understanding that we probably don't have the money to maintain it yet.
Correct.
But if we did, how far off are we?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we have approximately, I think the last time I looked, just around $4 million in, in park capital fees that we have there. We are, we have money to do parts of the Phase Two of Walker Park. And, and, but it's just, how are we going to maintain those facilities? You know, if we put in a new ball field, we have the money to do a new ball field. We have new money, we have money to do a, a parking lot. How are we going to maintain those facilities? And that's where we're at right now, is that we have money to do something, but no money to maintain it because of our budget uncertainties.
So the 357,000 that we have there is enough to build the next phase?
No, no, that's not, that's not correct. That was going to go for a. That was going to go for a, some restrooms and some overflow parking lot.
Okay.
And that was just a portion of it.
Okay.
For the next phase.
Thank you.
Can I open the public hearing? Any discussion? We do need a parking lot out there. Is there any public comment on the capital improvement plan? Any more counsel discussion? Okay, closed public hearing? Okay. Can I get a motion to receive the presentation? Open public hearing? Adopt a resolution approving the proposed capital improvement program update for fiscal year 2018-19 through 2022 to '23 and appropriating funds for the midterm review and budget appropriations to projects in fiscal years 2018, 19, and 2019, 20.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Now, we have a presentation on.
There's more, there's more.
So, before you, on your next item is the budget itself and the adjustments to the budget. In addition to master fee schedule update and the modified CIP, the operating budgets have been reviewed for all funds with the following proposed modifications. Citywide expenditures are recommended to increase by a net of 1.6 million. Part of that, a big chunk of that, is encumbrances carried over from a prior year that we have to appropriate in the current year. Grant funds, special revenue spending, so additional spending that has a corresponding revenue. Council has already approved in March 405,000 for the patrol vehicles. Personnel costs are being reduced by 292,000 citywide. This is really a net effect of the increased MOU that the council has already approved. And some adjustments for new hires, along with vacancy savings that's primarily PD applied to Measure R. In addition, expenditures have been reduced by 153,000 due to California Department of Finance, their evaluation of the ROPS for successor agency. This is really activity that's passed through, passed through to Kasunus Community Services District per the settlement agreement. The revenues are increasing by one point, almost 1.2 million. These are mostly related to general fund increases, which I'll talk about in a minute, and the addition of one-time developer reimbursement received for Northeast Lighting and Landscape District of 281,000. So, that was for 1819. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about 1920. The biggest increase to expenditures is for additional costs made possible by the new refuse contract. Some of the cost increases, rate increases passed onto the market for refuse and other city operations. In addition, the city remittance amount paid to Cal Waste are anticipated to increase for the collection of residential waste bills processed by the city. Revenue increases 134,000. These are minor net adjustments. They're including, offsetting increases to refusing capital and decreases for slower-than-originally-anticipated building activities. This slide is really just a summary of what I described and the net impact, excuse me, for fiscal year 1819. The net increase is almost 60,000. And for 1920, the increase is 588,000. And there's some items in there that are basically a summary of what I just discussed. So, I want to talk a little bit about general fund. The focus of, this general fund is used for the operation of services primarily. And revenue, significant increases are listed here. 1.4 million are the expenditures. Again, those are primarily from encumbrances carried over from the prior year. 611,000 labor agreements, MOU. Now, this is an increase. Citywide, it became a decrease because of vacancy savings, but for the general fund, it is an increase of 185,000. And then, grant spending for PEG Energy Grant and others, an increase of 283. The revenue increase is 869. Carryover of grants, again, 177. Additional grant funding, so the PEG Grant, Energy, Community Block Grant, 377. And then, we do have some increases to taxes and fees here of 269,000. For the 1920 year, the expenditure increases are 360,000, primarily from labor agreement MOUs, 110, and then, pay grant spending. Revenue increases are 153,000. Although, there's some grant activity in here, there's also property tax increases. And those are just the most significant items. This, again, is a summary of the general fund for 1819. You see the revenue increases, less the carryover, expenditure increases. The, the net impact is about 53,000 increase for 1819. And then, in 1920, the increase is, the net increase is 207,000. So, presented here is a visual presentation of the sources of general fund revenue. So, most of our revenue is coming from property tax, 48%, sales tax, 24%, other taxes, license permits, charges for services, investment earnings. I always put the investment earnings in for Sean, the treasurer Sean, and miscellaneous income. On the expenditure side, this pie chart shows how the money is being spent on what services. So, police services, 47%, public works, which is the maintenance of the buildings and the facilities, 15%, central services, 26%, city offices, and community development. By category, so by expenditure category, this slide shows the same monies, but what we spend it on. We are a service organization. We spend primarily most of our money on personnel. There is, so that's 71%, operation and maintenance, 27%, and very little on capital, minor capital and CIP. I'm going to slow down just a little bit. That was general fund and citywide. Now, I'm going to go on to parks and rec. We're good? Okay. So, parks and rec, I did kind of a more summarized here because basically, there's not a lot of change. The changes are an increase in 1819 of 78,000 and a decrease in 1920 of 114,000. So, a lot of work being done to, do we analyze all of these funds? Absolutely. We've been on a three, four-year adventure in budget cutting, and some of it's being realized here. So, then, we did the same kind of pie charts for parks and rec. Where does the money, revenue come from? Galt market, 77%. Recreation, 12%. Aquatic Center, six. Parks, four. And miscellaneous, one. How is the money spent? Basically, what kind of activities do we spend our money on? The majority of it's spent on the market. And then, parks has a sizable amount of 25%, 23%. And recreation is up there at 17% with the Aquatic Center and miscellaneous. Again, we're a service organization, so personnel costs dominate the costs, although for parks and rec, it's a lesser percentage primarily because of all the heavy use of hourly staff. Any questions on parks and rec?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On the pie graph for the revenue, what piece of that pie would represent the contribution from the general fund?
It is not on that chart. So, these are just the actual revenues coming in. It does not include that contribution from general fund.
Okay, so this isn't, so this graph doesn't represent 100%? Or, I mean, it does, but the percentage is though?
Well, it's 100% of the revenue that comes in, except for
Gotcha.
that transfer.
So, Claire, a quick question on the general fund, where the money comes from. We're at 24% sales tax. Is that, in some of the studies you've worked in, is that low or high or average?
It's fairly low. There's certain documentation that comes out of the state. They do a per capita, they do, you name it. They, they give a lot of information. And I don't have the documents in front of me. I can bring them to you later time. But our per capita is really, really low. And what we receive in sales tax, partly because of a lack of businesses and partly because of our rate. It's fairly, fairly low compared to most. I can bring you more information, if you'd like, about surrounding areas, what their percentage is. It's, it's, not every city gives this kind of information in their public presentation. So, I can't give all of the cities in the county, but I've looked at a few in this county, Sacramento, and in surrounding areas.
Probably because we're, it goes on with some of the presentations where we're bleeding sales tax to other people, residents are shopping in other places.
Part of it is that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, so just 70, so basically, roughly 75% of our revenue comes from taxes of some sort. Actually, I'm sorry, more than that. With the other taxes, would that represent like TOT tax and other various? So, roughly between businesses and, let's say, hotels and other types of businesses that generate tax, we're like at 36%, right? I can barely read that.
Plus 40, plus the 48.
Yeah, but I mean, not including the property. I mean, I'm just talking like business tax, taxes that businesses generate, like hotels and
36. So, then, taking all of that data and putting it into a table with numbers, this table is the general fund summary. It basically is showing the fund balance and the impacts of the activities we just talked about. So, the top section separates out non-spendable items such as prepaid inventories, restricted amounts, per-council reserve policy, and the true-up of prior year negative fund balances. The bottom section shows the results of 1819 and the results of 1920 per the proposed budget. And the, what this table shows is how much our normal operating activities are using of our general fund reserve. This, this will be the topic of more discussions.
Right, so, counsel, recall that at our May 15 meeting, this was the chart that I really asked you to, to take a look at and, and study it. And I suggested to you that if there was any slide in this presentation that should give you and the community pause for concern, it would be this one. You see that at the end of fiscal year, in the first column of numbers where it says fiscal year 2018-19, we're taking the available fund balance of $4.8 million down to about 2.4 million. And then, in next fiscal year, if we don't change our ways, we, we, we take the available fund balance of 2.4 million down to $777,000. And as I indicated to you, when you asked me to take on this role as interim city manager, I'd just tell you the way it was. That's the way it is. And if you, as a council, fail to act, the city will be in a very significant financial crisis. And so, we, as the mayor indicated, or maybe it was just Claire, we have a lot of work to do this summer, and we will need to take and make very, very hard decisions, certainly much harder decisions than were made tonight.
This is a similar schedule for parks and rec. It basically takes what, what occurred in the prior fiscal year, trues it up. These are contributions coming from the general fund. They correspond to the schedule before this, along with the 1819 impact and the 1920 impact. So, the, the most, there is a line there for contribution from general fund, 1.4 million and 1.2 million.
So, that 300, 3 million of revenue, that includes what we just waived for the 20, 19, 20?
There would be an adjustment for that in 1920, reducing that downward.
Okay.
Taking all of that data and massaging it into the, your long-range financial plan, because of minor adjustments to the related budgets, the graph kind of looks similar to what you've seen before. The blue line being general fund, without any contributions being made to anything else. Parks and rec is the green line at the bottom. Lighting and landscape is the yellow line, orange-yellow. And the dotted line is the combination of all of those. This chart is really the same information, and what it's doing is it's layering in your reserves. So, the green portion is your economic uncertainty reserve. That's by council policy. Your yellow is, or, excuse me, the blue is other reserves, so the prepaid's, et cetera. And then, the available fund balance is the yellow. So, what this indicates is, you know, pictorially, that by 1920, you're pretty much out of available fund balance. And as we go through the subsequent years in the path we're on right now, we will be negative by 2024.
Well, but, I mean, you have this label as economic uncertainty reserve. Isn't, in fact, we will be cutting services?
Yes, if
I mean, you, you, you can't maintain the level of service we have today with a decline in revenue that you're showing.
And have, and have no savings in your account. It would be unwise to do so.
Unwise. I don't know that it's possible.
Thank you, Claire.
Claire, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the slide, Parks and Recreation Fund Summary, the list of the costs? Yeah, that one. So, why is it that the general fund contribution goes down by 225,000?
Do you, do you want to talk about the increased fees again, Armando?
That was the increased fees.
I think it's a combination of things, but there are increased fees included in that. And so, some of it is that. Some of it is just prudent spending. We've, we've really, particularly Armando's team and the budget team has really kind of hammered out a lot and tried to kind of squeeze every dime out of what they can budget. For the 1819 year, a lot of those costs have already been expended. So, you know, we, we know we had certain kinds of one-time costs that are embedded in there that are probably not included at all in 1920. Did you have anything to add to that, Armando? So, did you have anything to add to that, Armando? So, with that, the structural deficits in the LLDs and in Parks and Rec will need to be resolved to maintain appropriate reserve over time. Staff will be reviewing operations, are already in the process of that. Operations that impact particularly general fund, Parks and Rec, and LLDs. To develop options by August... Excuse me. Options involving expenditure, service cuts, along with revenue enhancements, will be provided to council in September for direction and action. With that, if there are no further questions.
Open the public hearing. Any more discussion from council? Any public comment? Close the public hearing? All right. Can I get a... Adopt a resolution approving the fiscal years 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020 annual budget with appropriations for midterm budget adjustments and approving fiscal year 2019, 2020 California constitutional appropriations limit? Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Made by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Campion. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you, Claire, for your marathon there. All right, next up, interim human resources director appointments. City Manager Hagman.
Mayor Lamson, members of the council, as you are aware, our current human resources director, Cora Hall, the esteemed Cora Hall, has accepted employment at another agency. It's quite a good move for Cora and not such a good move for us. But nonetheless, we certainly wish Cora well, and we thank her for all her service to the city and all she's done. In the meantime, as we conduct a recruitment for replacement human resources director, I believe it necessary to reach out and bring in an interim human resources director that can pick up the various, or keep spinning, I guess, the various plates that Cora has in the air. And we reached out to the human resource professionals in the Northern California area, taking, seeking input or any advice on potential retired annuitants that have the level of human resource experience that at least Cora has or that we need for our agency. We also took a look at bringing in a consultant or consulting firm, someone from a consulting firm. But with respect to what we need in human resources, we've determined that a consulting firm's scope and focus would have to be far too narrow and that we would be better served by someone with the requisite experience that is currently retired from service as a HR director. Now, the types of things that I'm talking about, that human resources, that you want in a human resources director, is someone that's well-steeped in public sector labor law, well-steeped in labor unit representation or working with the various labor units. There are always issues that come up with respect to your various memorandum of understanding with your various labor units. Workers' compensation, as well as in this city, the HR director wears the risk manager hat and serves on the board of the Risk Management Authority to which we belong. And so, the outreach effort yielded the... An individual, a retired annuitant by the name of Joanne Narlock. Joanne Narlock happens to also be an attorney. She is retired. She served for many years as the human resources director in the city of Lowdi, has other experiences as listed in the staff report. We consulted both with her previous employers when she was a full-time employee, as well as those agencies for which Ms. Narlock served as an interim human resources director. And those references yielded very positive comments. And so, because this is the employment of a retired annuitant, we do need the council to adopt a resolution appointing her as a retired annuitant. This is just a... Wouldn't be usual or customary, but it is with respect to retired annuitants under the Pearl, the Public Employee Retirement Law. And so, with that explanation, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have and commend to you our recommendation that you approve the employment, temporary employment agreement of Ms. Narlock, as well as the resolution. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Tom, so, just roughly, what's... What kind of savings are we talking about by having a retired annuitant versus filling the position right now because of the benefits?
That's a very good question. And under the government code, we are required to pay the hourly rate that the outgoing incumbent received to the incoming retired annuitant. But it stops there. The retired annuitant cannot earn any sort of employment benefit, to include vacation or sick leave or health care or any other type of benefit that a employee would otherwise earn. So, she will be earning as it identifies the rate of pay, hourly rate, of the outgoing human resources director of that position.
It's in the report. All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Sounds like a very competent person coming in. All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Do I have to read it? Motion to appointing Joanne M. Narlock Esquire as interim human resource director effective June 17, 2019, and authorizing city manager to execute an agreement for the temporary employment with Ms. Narlock. Can I get a second?
I'll do six.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Sandu. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Community Development Department, the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan Implementing Agreement Amendment, Plan Amendment, and Mitigation Fee Schedule.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers again. Chris Arias, Community Development Director. As mentioned, the item you have before you is an amendment to the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, or SSHCP, and amendments to the accompanying implementing agreement and mitigation fee schedule. The city council adopted the SSHCP and its associated components in October of last year. The SSHCP is a regional effort that provides development and infrastructure projects with a streamlined, predictable federal and state permitting process and also mitigation fees while creating a preserve system to protect habitat, open space, and agricultural lands. The HCP provides a more effective process for protecting natural resources as compared to the previous process of a project-by-project mitigation that often resulted in small and isolated preserves. The HCP will ensure the creation of a large interconnected preserves that are sustained in perpetuity by an adequately funded management program. Other agencies participating in the plan include Sacramento County, SAC Regional County Sanitation District, the Sacramento County Water Agency, Capitol Southeast Connector JPA, and the city of Rancho Cordova. A component of the adopted plan is an implementing agreement for the Habitat Conservation Plan. It clarifies the provisions of the SSHCP and the processes that ensure successful implementation of the plan in accordance with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service incidental take permit requirements and applicable law. Most of the revisions to the implementing agreement are minor edits and clarifications that are shown in the revised implementing agreement track changes document. A more significant revision to the agreement included removing the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, or CDFW, as a party to the agreement. Since the implementing agreement is not related to any actions by CDFW, it was recommended that they be removed. Also, language in the implementing agreement related to the Migratory Bird Treaty Act has been deleted. It's been removed because the current interpretation of the act does not prohibit incidental take of migratory birds. The United States Fish and Wildlife Service has indicated that the language in the agreement needs to be consistent with the current interpretation of the act. The SSHCP Plan Amendment includes changes to the JPA agreement, changing the composition of the governing board from six members to seven, which includes an additional elected official from SAC County. The JPA board is now comprised of four SAC County board members, up from the three, two council members from Rancho Cordova, and one city of Galt representative, currently filled by Councilmember Campion, and then, as an alternate, Mayor Lamson. Another amendment to the implement is that the implementing committee has been revised to Implementation Review Committee. And this Implementation Review Committee assists and advises the JPA board on matters related to the HCP. The members of it have been revised from five to seven, including a member from the city of Galt, SAC County, Rancho Cordova, two representatives from the agricultural community, and one representative from the environmental community, as well as a representative from the business community. The final request, it is amendment to the fee schedule. The approved fees were based on 2015 rates, and again, that was approved by council and the other plan partners in 2018. So, the revised fees reflect a CPI increase since 2015, which represents a 9.5% increase from the 2015 rates that were approved in 2018. So, development projects and infrastructure projects have to mitigate their biology impact fees, so they pay this fee, and the city of Galt will be... Take applications for these mitigation fees and then pass them through to the SSHCP. Kim Hudson, the executive director with the SSHCP, is here. I wanted to introduce her, and I think she could give a little bit of background on the HCP, as well as perhaps an update. This is a new program, and so, we're all kind of learning as we're going on the actual operation. And Kim has been great in helping us because one of the disadvantages for a small city, which we talked about in the use of consultants, is having the expertise to handle certain topics. And biology is a specialized field, so having him with the Habitat Conservation Plan help us is great for our department. So, Kim?
Okay, well, I'll be brief. It's getting late. I'm Kim Hudson. I am the executive director of the South Sacramento Conservation Agency. This is a plan that's been in the works for over 20 years. And although the plan... There's a lot of moving pieces to this plan, and I'm not going to go over all that tonight because we'd be here for hours. But since the plan was adopted, there's been a lot of progress on getting the permits in place. One of the key aspects to getting the permits in place, especially from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, is this revised implementing agreement. Once that's fully executed, we will be... The permit has already been issued. It's just been issued pending the full execution of this implementing agreement. So, once that's signed and executed, we will have our permit from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, which is a really monumental step forward in this plan adoption. So, that's one of the items that's before you. I don't know... Chris covered it so well, I don't have very much more to say. The changes to the implementing agreement were from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They requested that those changes be made. And I think that's really all I have.
So, we'd be available?
Any questions for me? I will say that one of the duties of the agency itself is to assist the plan permittees through this process. So, Chris is going to be welcome to call me and meet with me on projects, and I can work with Chris since that's part of my duties as the executive officer for that, executive director for the agency. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We really appreciate you coming down and sitting through that. I would have pulled you forward if I would have known.
Oh, no, it's not a problem.
It's going to take two and a half hours, so... Anyway, we appreciate you guys. I know Kurt's on the...
Actually, the board took an action. It was the last meeting, is we approved this, what you have before you tonight.
Any other councilmembers? All right. Well, thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
All right. See if we can get a resolution authorizing or a motion, the mayor, to execute the revised implementing agreement for the Habitation Conservation Plan for South Sacramento County, approving South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan amendments to Chapter 9 implementation, and approving the SSHCP mitigation fee schedule. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Congratulations, Mr. Arias. All right. Any communication?
Not tonight.
City Clerk's report?
Nothing tonight.
Comments by staff? Let's see.
Nothing from me.
All right. Mr. Solis?
I'll just briefly applaud the HCP, having come from San Joaquin County where we have one. It is a win-win for development as well as the preserves, so it's a good thing.
Wonderful. Director Arias?
Nothing further.
How many more meetings do we have, Ms. Cora? This is it. Oh. We don't have cupcakes.
Going out with a bang.
Well, we're going to miss you. I'm going to miss you, too.
I'm going to cry. Go ahead.
So, we're currently recruiting for the positions of city manager, human resources director, police officer, wastewater system operator, water conservation officer, and youth sports official for softball. So, I encourage anyone who's interested to go to our website and apply. Thank you. Director Solis, you've had a few meetings where you haven't had to speak much, and it was...
I do have a couple of things. Wanted to make you aware of some special events coming up in June. We have the Taste of the Market this Sunday. It's from 8:00 to 3:00. We have about 75 vendors. We'll have music, we'll have food. It's a great thing for the community here that's usually at work to come in and see what the market is on a very smaller scale. So, I encourage you guys to come and get the word out. We have the Galt Safety Expo on the 22nd. On the 23rd, Sacramento County Dog and Cat Wellness Clinic will be at Harvey Park from 9:00 to 3:00. And then, don't forget, our IDC is coming up with the Ton 5K Run. So, I encourage everybody to sign up now so they can get a T-shirt, and that'd be great to keep that tradition going and keep his memory alive. I also have some... It's a very busy week for me, so we have some meetings scheduled this week for Prop 68. I brought this forward to you guys before, talked, discussed it, put together an ad hoc committee with some of our commissioners. We've identified four parks to apply for these grants. They're non-matching grants, 100% funded, so... But they're a competitive grant. And part of that is that they require us to have meetings with the stakeholders of the neighborhoods that these parks are located in. So, we identified four areas that are qualified. And Meadowview Park, we'll be meeting out there on Wednesday, June 5th at 6:00 p.m. That's tomorrow. Thursday, we'll be meeting out at Harvey Park at 6:00 p.m. Friday, we'll be meeting at the Aquatic Center, and that'll include the skate park also. And then, Monday, we'll go out to Lion's Oak Park. Again, this is... They want, I believe it's 3,000 or 3 acres per thousand or less for parks, and a medium household of less than 51,000. So, these areas here have met that criteria. And so, we'll be going forward and asking what people want to see in their neighborhood parks. And then, we'll put together a... Everything that they've asked for, we'll bring that to city council. We'll bring it to the Parks and Rec Commission first, then we'll bring it to the city council meeting July 17th, and then submit our grants before the August 5th deadline.
So, forgive me if I forgot what you were saying, but so, who's going to these parks? Are you having public meeting? Are you having a public meeting, or are they...
We're having a public meeting. We've invited people through our Facebook pages, emails, our neighborhood watches. So we're getting the words out that way.
That's where I'm hearing rumors, some of the kids were like, "Are you getting us a new skate park?"
So we encourage people, we encourage people to show up, hearing from some of the other communities, and they're not getting a lot of turnout. So I'm hoping that we're a little different and we'll get some great input.
Great, thank you.
Can I just add one more thing? I'm sorry. I just, again, why we're not going on the northeast side of town or looking at other parks, they just don't meet the requirements to apply for that. So that's, these are identified and qualified, so.
Could you forward council that so we can share that, too, and we can post it? Thank you.
That was part of the Park and Recreation Commission meeting, the last meeting you talked.
Correct.
Extensively about that.
Yeah.
Exciting news. Chief Sockman, how are you?
Doing great. I have three things, and they'll be quick. There's Coffee with a Cop this weekend, Saturday, June 8, from 10:00 to noon at the coffee shop on C Street. And then I'll be out of the office until next Tuesday, so Lieutenant Kownowski will be in charge. And then finally, I just wanted to say publicly that I'm going to miss Cora.
Very quickly, I'll echo Mike Selling's comments about the HCP. I, too, come from a county with, that went through the laborious effort of putting in place an HCP. And it is, at least in that county, universally enjoyed by both the development community and those jurisdictions that were part of the HCP. I think it provides a lot of surety of development to developers, especially where you have these types of biotic mitigations that may need to take place. And so I think overall, it'd be a very good thing for the city. And finally, I want to thank Cora for all her help and assistance to me, as well as the city. We've only known each other a short while, but you will be missed. Thank you.
Ashley, thank you for being here. Anything? All right. Councilmember Campion.
Nothing.
Councilmember Lozano.
I just want to thank Cora for her service to the city also. I think we should probably have had cake or something here. Do we do that? We don't do that?
Yes, we do that.
Normally don't?
I dropped the ball.
No kick, no flag.
But in all seriousness, Cora...
Budget cuts are tough already.
Thank you for your service to the city and your help with me as I was onboarding, you know, talking about MOUs and all of that stuff. So you were real great help, and I'm sure your next agency will be, will find it a benefit to have you there, so thank you.
Donna, anything? Donna? Donna, okay. Councilmember Sandu?
Thank you for, for your service, and congratulations to your new venture. I also attended yesterday, finally, the grand opening of ARCO Gas Beach Arena with the staff members and the mayor. And I believe, you know, we can get some kind of sale tax to revenue the city. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
I wanted to mention that Mayor Lamson and I had the pleasure of speaking at the Memorial Day at the cemetery. And it was a great turnout. It's a ton of people out there. And it was an honor to speak on the two veterans that I spoke about, and Paige gave a great speech. Also, the, I want to mention some comment, if there's nobody here anymore, but the comment about the enforcement of the garbage. You know, I had emailed Chief Sockman in Public Works and our city manager about, you know, being cognizant of, I think, the upcoming problem we're going to have with people dumping their trash in other people's containers because a lot of businesses are going to carts now instead of the lockable larger dumpsters. So there's no way to lock them unless you kind of rig up something on your own. So we've already had some businesses that are complaining, you know, their carts are in the alley and they're getting people, people are throwing garbage in it. So I think with the, with the, with the high, high real estate price of garbage cans right now, I think it's going to get worse. So anyways, they were receptive to that, and we're looking into what enforcement can be done, so. Other than that, thank you for your service, Cora. And you're going to Tahoe, right? South Lake Tahoe?
Uh-uh, El Dorado.
El Dorado, that's right. Why would you pick that over Galt, really? What do they got that we don't have?
Money.
I was being sarcastic. But good luck.
Yeah, we had a few things. We had the Chamber luncheon at Pastosa's. That was quite scrumptious. And it was so exciting to open AMPM last, yesterday. Someone had every flavor of Slurpee. But you literally have to be rocket science to work the soda machine. The poor guy had to come over and show me how to work the soda machine. So go check it out. And as soon as we pulled the ribbons off the gas, people were pulling in. So get that sales tax going. And Cora, thank you, thank you so much for your patience. And I know you came in and as a new person has to redo everything and make sure everything's all compliant and just your patience with us and emailing us when we forget things and what happened to all this and giving it to me again, and I just appreciate your patience with the council, and we will miss you. Meeting adjourned.